We've got a nice crowd this evening. It is 5:30, so let's call the meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes.
I would, I think it would be appropriate to thank Commissioner Hogssett for getting his official portrait done.
I'd like for you to look.
Wow, that's not bad. That's pretty good. Better than I could do myself.
Becoming.
Yeah, thank you for that.
It has its gum buster pack on.
So, nice, very nice. Thank you so much, Steve McBride.
So, that's pretty good. All right. City licenses, we do not have any. We do have some appointments. First of all, this evening, we have the Downtown Art and Culture Advisory Board, their three-year terms. Two terms have expired, and we have Lacy Franco and Wendy Derrick have both completed applications for their first terms. We'd also like to thank Tim Ragland and Janelle Knoll for their service. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lacy Franco and Wendy Derrick to their first terms. Would there be a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, on the park board, be some turnover on the park board here. We have a replacement term. We received three applications. We received one from Jim Hogan, from Mark Coder, and Alex Orik. These will carry over because if you look at the next item, we have three-year terms available starting July 1st. So, we're not going to make those folks that are not appointed reapply. Therefore, I'd make a motion that we appoint Jim Hogan to the park board for the unexpired term.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If others would like to apply for the park board, we will take applications for that until June 30th. Library board, we have four-year terms, two have expired, and we have two eligible for reappointment. Those two are reappoint, are to reappoint Tom Sewell to a first term. It was a nonexpired term that he fulfilled, and then Carolyn Torrance to a second term. So, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tom Sewell and Carolyn Torrance to the library board.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the Recreation Commission has an expiring term that starts July 1st. Tony Holmes is eligible for reappointment. He would like to serve again. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Tony Holmes for his second term. Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then, tree board, we have two-year terms, three expired terms, and three eligible for reappointment, however, one, we do have one that does not want to serve again. Therefore, I would make a motion that we would appoint Michelle Anderson and Leslie Fox, both to their second terms. Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the other term, we would, we will take applications until June 30th, 2017. Okay? Takes care of appointments. Adoption of the consent agenda. Gentlemen, your pleasure this evening.
I'm good.
Yeah, I make a motion, do we adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Introductions. It's with great pleasure this evening that I introduce to the community, for his very first day on the job, and first down job, is a commission meeting. The kind of getting thrown in there, it's a real baptism, so to speak. So, I would like to introduce to the community Mr. Craig Whitehead, and I hope you've had a great day. I know he got here Tuesday evening, and he got settled Wednesday, so he could hit the road running this morning.
Very good.
Welcome, Craig.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate coming. I appreciate that. Don't see, city managers don't get applause too often, so I appreciate that. That's it, huh? Anyway, I'd just like to say thanks to Mayor Meyer and the commissioners for having the faith and confidence in me to bring me here. I appreciate that. My family and I are looking forward to getting settled in here. I'm here right now by myself. My wife and daughter will be here sometime in mid-July when we close on a house. So, we're looking forward to that as well. I'd also like to thank the city staff that I've met so far and worked with. They've been absolutely terrific, and they've been very helpful in helping me getting, getting started, so appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank the many people that have welcomed me to the community. I've received several dozen emails welcoming me to the community, and I just really appreciate that. That's, that is terrific, so it's, it's good to see that, so thank you.
Okay. Well, again, welcome. All right.
I did not do that. It's Fred's.
Item G for public hearings, or public hearing regarding a proposed loan not to exceed $3,100,000 from the Kansas Water Public, Public Water Supply Loan Fund to finance water treatment plant improvements. Sean?
Yes, the city's considered this application for some time. This is part of the application process, the public hearing. The cost, current cost estimate is 3.1 million that was previously prepared. If that increases, the city can amend the loan in the future. The current interest rate on this loan is 2.3 percent. The maximum term is 20 years, so if the city chose to do that, it would end up, pay for all that debt with user fees. It'd be about a $4.50 per month increase in user fees, but that's, will be a later discussion, but those are rough numbers as, as part of this process. So, roughly for every million dollars borrowed, the increase in monthly user fees would be about a dollar and 45 cents for, for work on the water system. The city's used this loan process before on other water treatment or, or water projects, but, so it's a familiar process to the city. But, that's basically it in a nutshell, but as part of the public hearing process, I'd be glad to answer any questions from the commission or the public.
Questions?
Yeah. The way I understand is with the, the application, what we're doing now is just applying for the potential borrowing of 3.1 million. Once the actual scope of the work, that could be modified down, or as you mentioned, but right now, we're just in the loan process to secure the funding till we decide exactly how much we're going to need.
Yeah, you can, you could approach it two different ways. You could start in the process and amend it before you sign the loan agreement, or you can just proceed on through, do your loan agreement for 3.1 million and modify that. If you, if you wanted to get your 3.1 million, and then after you bid the project and you need more money, it's not uncommon to do an amendment at that time. So, the amendment process is fairly painless.
Right now, we've got a lot that we're looking at. We still haven't completed the rate study, the, the other study with other capital improvement projects, and this, so, you know.
Until, until you, to further answer your question, until you sign the loan agreement, you've committed the city to nothing.
Okay.
So, that, that will come to the commission again at some point.
This is just the formal process to put the application
Correct.
In process, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, and so then it's for 3.1 million as a max.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, from, from my understanding, that we aren't really signing and committing the city to obligating 3.1 in debt service, but...
That's correct. At some point in the future, when we get through this, farther through this process, there would be a commission action if you chose to, to sign that loan agreement.
On the other loan we had was 4 million. I think we kind of roughly, that was secured before I was on the commission, but we had roughly identified some projects potentially for that, but then the money wasn't drawn down until actually we bid the project and secured, and some of that was flexible on how we could amend our projects.
That, that's exactly right. If you, if things were great and you only spent $2 million at the water plant, then you'd have, still have a million dollars left for other water projects, and from my past experience, the state would allow you to spend that on other water projects.
Okay. Is this strictly water plant usage?
Well, this one would, would, in the, in the application process, if you do your environmental review for the entire city, then you can use that money on anything for the water system. So, that's what I would suggest the city does, is set, set the process up so that you can use it for anything.
Is that the first step in the process?
It is. It's the, it's the next step in preparing the application, is the environmental review process.
I was wondering, say, our projects actually come less, and we wanted to replace some distribution lines, some mains, or support water distribution, we could still
A tank or something, yeah.
Do that without having to start the process over?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? No, that one's okay. All right, so then our intertation, entertain a motion then that we approve a resolution. Oh, we've got to close the hearing. We've got to have, oh, right, okay. I thought we opened it. All right, so we have a public hearing that's now open. Okay, yes. Sure.
My name is Debbie Miller, and I think one problem our city government for the last seven years has been, we failed to set goals and expectations, because I think if you set those things, you have someplace to head. So, Mr. Whitehead, I'm hoping that you'll set the expectation that as we go through the budget, or, you guys, go through the budget procedure every year, that you'll recognize the fact that every department has some absolutely must needs. And in the case of the water department, this thing needs to be maintained much, much better. So, as you go through the budgeting process, be sure that the must, must haves get the money they need, so we don't allow some, an asset such as our water department that's so crucial to deteriorate to the point where it is now, and then have to borrow money to fix it up. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you. Okay, not hearing any, then we'll close the hearing. Okay. Now, we can entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Health, Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan for the Kansas Public Water Supply from the Kansas Water Supply Loan Fund. Would there be a second?
A second.
I'd make the motion. There's a second. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Presentation of Eagle Sta, Eagle Scouts Appreciation Awards for Work at Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo.
Hello, I've got some good news, and I would like to recognize three individual young men, if you want to come forward. They are Adam Hayes, Rich Garrus, and Jacob Green. These three young gentlemen did their Eagle Scout project out at Ralph Mitchell Zoo, and so in May of 2016, they presented a project to the zoo staff for a project approval, and then they went to Four Paws for help for funding. And I have Julie Volker here, the president of Four Paws, and she'll speak right after I do. But anyway, they started their projects, and basically, if you see the eagles, boys, you want to stand to the side so people can see?
Turn sideways here, so people can see you.
Okay, here's, here is, here's
There we go, right there.
This is Adam Hayes, Adam's project, and he did the barrier fence at the Cougar Exhibit. As you can see, that is an extensive project, and I would love for the boys to come up and talk, I know, but we don't have time. But, did an excellent job, and that's Adam's project. And then Jacob Green, the bridge there was in poor condition, and he built a new bridge, made it wider, so we can get, you know, our gators and stuff across it better, small trucks. So, Jacob did that. I think Jacob, you did that on a weekend, didn't you? So, yeah, he did a really good job there.
One weekend.
And that's Jacob's in the middle. And then Rich Garrus, next slide. Rich did the eagle, oh, he did signs down the ravine. He did the eagle, the bear, the cougar. He also did an eagle, a bird cutout that shows the difference lengths of the wings of different birds, and, and so that was really good. And then he also did a bear cutout, and it shows the different heights of different kinds of bears. So, if you haven't seen it, go down to the ravine and see all three of these boys' projects, and we really appreciate them picking Ralph Mitchell Zoo to do their Eagle Scout project. And I just would like to have the mayor give them a certificate.
Like for you guys.
If you want to say something right now.
All right.
Well, on behalf of Four Paws, gentlemen, I think maybe some of these projects, you bid off a little bit more than what you were expecting, but your leadership, your dedication, your tenacity to get it finished was fabulous, and we thank you very much. We can raise the money, but sometimes we're not real good about going out and doing the work, so we really appreciate the community when they step up. Excellent job.
Thank you. Adam?
You guys haven't gone out there, go see, it's good work.
There you go.
Jacob's in the middle.
That's okay.
Can we get one with the commissioner standing with him?
Thank you very much. Sure, sure. Here, you stand right there.
Rich, put your sign up. There you go.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for item I. We have presentation for budget requests. That's one of Craig's first tasks, is to start to assemble a budget for us for the 2018 year. Our first presentation will be from Independence Main Street.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on the work of Independence Main Street. I'm Tabitha Snodgrass, and I'm joined here by my board president, Julie Volker, who must stay really busy. And also in attendance, we have a few board members, Lisa Hugo, Jim Hayward, I don't see any others, but we want to thank you for the past support of Independence Main Street, and once again are asking for $20,000 for the fiscal year 2018. As you guys know, Independence Main Street is one of the most vibrant and successful downtowns in this area. Main Street recently hosted Kansas Main Street Directors, and I can't tell you how many compliments we got that, those two days when we took tours downtown. Everybody was so impressed by our traffic, our vitality, our qual, quality and quantity of our stores and services that we have in our downtown area, so it was just a real, a real great thing to happen. And we want to go over a few little highlights that are compliments over the past year. One of them is our IWW, or Incentives Without Walls. We have over $30,000 loaned out to downtown building owners, and this program is a zero interest for up to seven years, so that really helps out a building owner in making them, improving building, improving their buildings. With the work of our Economic Revitalization Committee, we were able to fill an empty storefront with the Eclectics Art Gallery. They started with a pop-up gallery during the INGE Festival, and now they are opening permanently on having a grand opening on July 8th, so we're very excited about that. And we also organized the open houses and the holiday parade, and with the help of our design committee, we were able to purchase new banners for the holidays uptown, that made the uptown this year. In December, it also saw our first Moonlight Madness sale on the Thursday evening before Christmas, which was a huge success, and I know we owe part of that to Mother Nature, because it was a wonderful evening. And then here's a big one. Along with the Chamber of Commerce and the Independence Housing Authority, we started a campaign on Small Business Saturday to push for shop local, and we continue that push today. And here's a fun fact. In 2016, we reimbursed $12,653 to local retailers through our Main Street Gift Certificate Program. So far, in 2017, we have reimbursed $12,398. That's only $255 behind what we did all of last year, and we're only six months into the year.
Wow.
So, and we push these as giveaways for businesses that are doing customer appreciation, employee appreciation. I know the city uses them, and we appreciate that. And when you buy these Main Street gift certificates, that ensures that your money is staying right here in Independence, and we have over 59 businesses that accept our Main Street gift certificates, and hopefully 60 in the fall. And I don't need to tell you about the success of our St. Patrick's Day pub crawl, but I do want to elaborate a little bit on the foot traffic you bought from out of town. And just the, the other communities that I know were represented, there was Parsons, Coffeyville, Cherryville, Nioto Shay, and Chinute were all in town. They wouldn't have come that evening, so it was a big draw. And there's not a week that goes by that I don't have somebody ask, when are we going to do that again? It was so fun seeing all the traffic uptown. During the William INGE Festival this year, we put together a basket of things that you can only get in Independence, and then we encourage, we had an INGE bill made up, which kind of was like a playbill, and it had all the local retailers listed on it, along with some Main Street members that maybe are not the downtown area. And we encouraged the INGE goers to visit at least 10 of those, and once they did, they turned those INGE bills in, and we had a drawing, and that basket went to someone in Kansas City area. And when I called her, she was so excited about what we did and how the concept of getting out-of-towners into our local businesses. Currently, we're working on our annual sidewalk sale that is set for July 29th, and we have teamed up with the chamber again, and we're going to coincide it with the downtown movie night and hopefully make a day trip out of it. So, come do our sidewalk sale, stay that evening for the movie night, so hopefully that'll go over good. And these are just a few examples of what we do at Main Street. There's lots more. And do you want to add to that, Julie?
I would just, again, echo Tabitha's support. Tabitha joined us in September, retiring, replacing the retiring Liz Moore, and Tabitha has hit the ground running and done a fabulous job. She spends a lot of time working with the downtown retailers, doing some Facebook promotions, helping them get their products and their ideas out. But, we also have a very vibrant Economic Recovery Committee that continues to work on ideas of how we can bring more business to downtown, and our Promotions Committee, as well as design, and we have an organizational committee. But our Promotions Committee is really starting to focus a lot on how do we bring out-of-town money into town? And, you know, along with the chamber, I know that's partly their role also, but we're really focused on our retail businesses, and we think that's important. And as Tabitha said, a lot of times, we walk downtown and we think, oh, gosh, we've got empty buildings, and, but if you compare us to a lot of the same-sized cities in the state of Kansas, our downtown is, is beautiful, and it is more vibrant than what we believe it is. So, shop local, there's lots of places to shop.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for considering our request, and we welcome any questions or...
So, just to review quickly, Tabitha, your request is the same as it's been for the last four or five years?
Yes.
Several years, yeah, okay. Twenty thousand.
Yes, 20,000.
Okay. All right, questions, mister?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next is AWOL, and Dr. Eastep, Philip Eastep.
We were in front of the commission a couple of months ago, and so I'm not going to repeat all of the background that we tried to lay out, and I just want to point out just a couple of things. As we said then, in the 36 years, AWOL's only received two increases, one, and the last one was in '06, or no, '09, and we did the justification for all of the expenditures that are made and, and all. What was done at that time was the increase of $200 was taken out of the repair fund. I think it's interesting that in all the years that AWOL was there, nobody knew that there was a $5,000 a year repair fund, and it wasn't ever utilized, but I'm not quite sure where it went. So, we're not asking to go back all of the 39 years and do that. A couple of other things, just to help you understand, if you have kept up at all with what's, Parsons is going through relative to their animal control system, and what they're finding is that it's incredibly expensive if you have to try to do it yourself. The licensure is completely different. They're saying you've got to be open from 7:00 to 7:00. You've got an entirely different license system. I think if we can maintain what we've got, we don't have to grant, we can use the grandfather and stay there. So, as we've asked, and, and we've put down in our letter to have the increase that we're requesting, and the other thing that, that we wanted to emphasize is that the quality is what is so critical, and that we can maintain that only by having this sort of an increase.
Questions? So, quick, we gave you $200 a month, and I, it was what, three months ago?
They took the, out of the budgeted
Out of the 5,000.
Maintenance funds, so, you know, it didn't actually modify the budget.
It didn't modify the budget. So, this is, the $500 a month is in addition to...
Yeah, and then we would put their repair fund
Back.
Back to 5,000. And I will say, sometimes you may not realize that some of that's spent because it's maybe repairs that the city makes, and we just pay the bills out of that line item.
Yes.
So, when they do make repairs, that would, that's where they pay for those.
Right.
So...
So, if they have a need of a repair on the building, do they turn in a work order to the city then? Is that the way they should be doing?
They generally, they generally call us, and we try to send somebody out. Now, there's some things we can or can't do, but I know our maintenance guy, Rick, went out there a few months ago, and I think he made some repairs to the different things.
Yeah, well, there, there are some significant repairs
Yeah.
That need to be made, and sometime, well, just a door, and it was said, well, this door's going to cost $1,200, and another one was some cabinetry, and, well, we can't replace the cabinetry. Well, I don't quite understand that, but we can work with the, with the maintenance people on that. The other major thing that needs to be addressed at some point is the storage shed may go ahead and fall down fairly soon, but it's just some, you know, sort of things we need to do. But the main thing that we need is just the ongoing operating, and we certainly appreciate the city recognizing that it was their water bill and, and all, and that's helped to the tune of about $100 a month, and that's very much appreciated.
And I believe there's a heater or something that, that's very old, that's probably going to be, need to be replaced
Yeah.
In the near future, too, potentially.
And the truth of the matter is, one of the other things that we'd really like to do, and we're going to do just a special fundraising thing, is the odor is oppressive, and we had a very good industrial air purifier, which did a great job and everything, but when it went down, the replacement cost was, you know, fairly prohibitive and everything, but that's one of the things that we really have high on the list, is to get a air purifying system, which will really help the environment for not only the people that are in there working and everything, but the animals, too. So, there's things like that that need to be done in regard to that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. It's just sometimes with the preventative maintenance all along, it can, instead of looking at ignoring and not using the $5,000 one-year, spread the maintenance out so we stay and not have to look at exceeding that maintenance all at once.
Well, I will say, now that we're aware of it, you can bet that we're going to...
Yeah. I had a feeling that that was... I did notice you smiled when you mentioned...
Gary, you have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then last, we have MAC, Montgomery County Action Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Tricia Purdon, the new Executive Director of Montgomery County Action Council, in case you haven't met me yet, which you haven't. I'm here today to talk about the MAC budget, some of our accomplishments, and then just give a little bit of an overview of what MAC does and our purpose. In the past, we were mostly an industrial recruitment organization, and that was our primary focus. We're really trying to work on broadening our scope at Montgomery County Action Council to really harness all of economic development and what that entails. If you look at any other organization, economic development organization around the country, they typically cover not only industrial recruitment, but business retention, entrepreneurship, small business development, quality of life, and even retail recruitment, especially at the national chain level recruitment. So we are going to be working on adding those services onto MAC going into the future. We are asking for $25,000 this year. Previously, we were funded at $17,000, so it is an increase of $8,000 from last year's request. We haven't had an increase in a few years, but with the addition of the services, the additional marketing information that we're doing, we're doing a new website, and just really trying to increase Montgomery County's presence across the country, especially with what's been going on in our county. We have a lot of stuff that we need to accomplish. We need to get the Amazon building filled, the Southwire building filled. But at the same time, we have seen a lot of accomplishments that have happened, that MAC has worked on, assisted with, and just partnered with the city and the other entities like the Chamber and downtown Main Street and the county. So I just quickly wanted to go over some of our accomplishments that we've seen just in the last year since 2016. And honestly, some of these are ones that I was very aware of when I worked at the city of Coffeyville, and things that we've collaborated on. And I wouldn't be surprised if Aaron Heckman calls me after this and says, "No, we did this and this and this, too." So forgive me if I forget something. But small business support this last year, we worked with a local hotel to increase their energy efficiency by setting them up with an auditor to help improve their electrical and utility use. We provided or processed two small business microloans, Front Porch Media, and then an eCommunity microloan also. We also assisted Hugo's Industrial Supply and Levine Enterprises. There was a little bit of an issue with financing with the building after they moved into that facility, and we assisted them with an IRB and helped to do all the processing and paperwork to get that completed so that they could move forward. We also worked with Sonic on their site selection and relocation, and some of the other details that go along with that process. Legislative, we, I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but the Rural Opportunity Zone was on the chopping block this past year in the legislature. They considered eliminating that program. And if you're not aware what that is, it's a program that incentivizes, especially new graduates, but people from outside of the state of Kansas, to come to rural communities to work, to go to school. But it allows them to take a five-year personal income tax deduction on their state income taxes. In addition, they can sign up to get a $15,000 student loan forgiveness. Montgomery County is the number-one county in the state of Kansas for the number of people who have applied for that program. So we've really taken advantage of this program, and we've only been in it for, let's see, we got it passed in 2014, so very short, and all of a sudden, we're at the very top of that list. So it's really an accomplishment that's definitely helped us. So we lobbied to make sure that that was not eliminated this year. In addition, HPIP and PEAK were also on the chopping block this year, right along with Star Bonds. We made sure that the HPIP and PEAK, that we got our voice heard from Montgomery County, so that those two programs, which are absolutely critical to recruiting new business to our county, especially Amazon and Southwire, I don't see how we could possibly get that done without those programs. So we lobbied for that, and they, legislature isn't over, but have not been cut. Housing quality of life, one of the biggest projects probably Paula did this last year was doing the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Independence, Cherryville, Kany, and I think even Coffeyville, they still need to get theirs done, but the program had expired. And so we worked with the county to get that program restarted and recertified so that you could still have property owners take advantage of that program. The county normally would do that, but their GIS system got infected with a virus and completely crashed, and there was no way for them to do that in time for you to get your program renewed. So MAC staff did that for you as a service to the city. We also worked on county-wide housing initiatives to get all four communities housing assessment tools completed, and we've been working with Kany, Cherryville, and Coffeyville. You have April Nutt, who's outstanding, been working on your hat, so you can be eligible for state financing for housing programs. Expansion and retention, which is obviously one of our biggest goals for MAC, we assisted Cessna over several years on a wide range of items to ensure their growth and development of the new Caravan, the M2, the Mustang. We've been working with them since the very beginning, when Macedo was founded, and we brought Cessna and AIW to Montgomery County back in 1998. So that's something that we're very proud of that has continued. Standard Motor Products, this one goes back to when I worked at MAC before. We talk about economic development taking years. I sat at that table with Standard Motor Products when they said, "Well, we're thinking about relocating a Florida plant, and we're thinking about maybe doing a new clean room facility, but we don't really know how to go about doing that." So we helped them get that process started. We set up meetings with their CEO. We set up meetings with a Major League Baseball player, apparently, that the CEO really wanted to meet, Governor Brownback. And they all had a great shindig in New York City, and we helped, kind of helped facilitate that happening. And we all saw how that ended up. So we have, they've raised their median wage because of that new increase, which really helps, especially Independence, because I think the last quote was like 90% of their employees live in the city of Independence. So that's a huge economic impact for the city. Lastly, we worked with recruitment, new aerospace companies departures, we helped on that project. And then also Kelly Aerospace, we assisted the city on that project as well. So two new industries have come to Independence in the past year and a half. Again, I know that in tough budget times, another $8,000 is a challenging decision to make during budget. I worked for the city of Coffeyville, I understand how that works, but we really feel like that is justified in the amount of work that we've already accomplished just in a year, and the number of projects we have in the pipeline right now that we really think we can accomplish in the next couple of years. So with that, I will open it for any questions or...
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with each of those budgets, as we go through the process, or those requests, as we go through the process, we'll consider them for the final budget.
And if you don't get the money, it's Craig's fault, by the way. Craig Whitehead called him.
Okay. Next item is, these are items for Commission action. Consider requests from Young Professionals, YPI, to raise funds for the purchase of bike racks downtown and possibly at the park.
Okay. Well, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Hannah Yanis. I am on the Board of Young Professionals and Independence. Ashley Wright is here with me today, she is also on the board. I have been on the board a short time, but we have found that we want to do things that benefit the community. And one of the ideas that we had was to have an annual fundraiser in which the funds would go to something that would benefit the overall health of the community. And this year, we thought that should be bike racks for the downtown area and also at the park and zoo. I've ridden my bike downtown before, there's no place to park your bike. I have left it in my office downtown, or just try and find something to chain it to so you can leave it safely. So I think that getting bike racks installed downtown will be a good draw for businesses, and it will also motivate people to be a little bit more healthy and get out and move and do something a little bit different than driving their car downtown. We have received approval from the park board to install bike racks at the park and zoo. They were very appreciative of our efforts and our desire to want to help out with that. We were thinking, and I gave you guys handouts, we were thinking about five to seven, maybe, downtown, depending on businesses. We haven't spoken to businesses yet because we wanted to get the approval from the city to even pursue this before we started, you know, making concrete plans as to where to set these. So we're looking at about five downtown, two to four at the park. And then as far as placement, we can place those, YPA can arrange for those to be placed. If the city has somebody that they want to place, we would be happy to reimburse for that expense as well. You know, that's something that we are expecting to pay for. The problem that we have found is that the city has an ordinance that prohibits bike riding on sidewalks, basically anywhere downtown. So this is going to be something that we're going to have to address and work with the city on. We want to be able to get bikes downtown and, of course, follow all the city rules in the process. So we do know that that is an obstacle that we're going to have to figure out along the way. But we would like to get approval from the city to pursue the fundraising effort and pursue purchasing those bike racks when we do have the fundraiser and have the funds available. Do you have anything to add?
Oh, I, we gave copies of the bike racks that we're looking at. They're all either five or seven capacity, so that they're not too big, they're not going to be monsters on the sidewalks at all, but we can still get some bikes in there.
The pictures you showed us here include three-loop, five-loop, and then you're talking seven-loop?
No, because you can fit one on each side of the loop, so that it doubles the capacity there.
All, probably can't see it there, you do have five locations that are mentioned, and having this been the first time we've seen this, those are all within that ordinance area.
Correct.
Okay.
I would be concerned with the actual placement, with the position of the bike and obstructing the pedestrian traffic, that it's not in a path or causes congestion there. You know, of course, the choker area might be more remote located, but it'd be nice to actually see the space available and how it would affect the sidewalk.
Right. And with some of the, and of course, these are just ideas at this point, but say at the corner by the new Blend It Nutrition, there's a pretty wide sidewalk, so placing it maybe up against the building isn't going to block off that sidewalk so much that people won't be able to get through.
Probably the two locations that would be more challenging would be the one at Independence Pharmacy and Uncle Jack's, both of those corners have a lot of traffic.
Right. And as I said, this is just ideas at this point.
Yeah. See, I think your concern is, which would be a concern that I would have, is that we don't want it too close to the main area.
Sure.
If it was out, because people can park there and then they could walk.
Correct.
And enhance the exercise part of it. But the, I mean, I would support the concept as far as looking at putting them in, but I don't want them too close to the downtown, simply because of all the activities we're going to have.
Right.
We're going to have the cinema, you know, the shows coming up, the cinemas, summer show, movies, parades, you know, all the things that we have going on.
Right.
I think we need to be really cognizant and thoughtful of that.
Absolutely. And again, we wanted to make sure we had city approval and backing before we just dove too far into this, and we would be absolutely willing to work with somebody at the city and come up with some ideas of where to place these that would be best for the city.
Comments?
Y'all know I'm married to the fitness Nazi, so she thinks this is the greatest thing she's heard in a long time. If we can find, you know, if we can figure out a way to do it and make it look attractive and not block access to the sidewalk.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
Are you...
Yeah, I'm in favor for it, too. At the professional building, some of the people visiting offices will ride bikes, and they bring them into the lobby or into the vestibules. So it is an issue that's pressing right now. The concern is finding the location in the busy park. You know, you've still got, we've got the gazebo and maybe that little area, Community National Bank, or the landscaping is. There's some places I think that could fit and would work really well, just that actual location needs more thought for final approval.
Absolutely.
But, you know, it is a, it is a need. And then the next, we need to work on motorcycle. I'd like a little shade, you know, to keep the sun off the bike.
Little canopy. Okay. So conceptually, I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow commissioners, that we're all for it. I think it's a good idea, it's a good plan, we just need to tweak it some, and...
Come up with a more definite plan.
Yeah, come up with a little more definite plan.
Okay.
And then the ordinance will be, need to be amended, so that, so we need to get with staff, with legal staff.
People ride their bikes downtown now.
Right.
They just don't ride up and down the sidewalk.
See, I think we can make this all, I think it can all work out.
It depends on the location, I think, to where you put them, whether it needs to amend the ordinance.
But they could get off at the curb. You can push a bike on the sidewalk, too.
Yeah.
Can't you? Isn't it just riding?
Yeah, the ordinance says to ride.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so I don't think you need to change it.
But it says to ride or otherwise operate.
No, that's not operate.
It could be, it could be tweaked.
Yeah. Okay.
Particularly if we can gain $15.
Does that give you enough direction?
Yes. We just wanted to make sure we had city support before we started knocking on business doors and figuring out if they would be okay with it and determining exact locations.
Right. I believe from this conversation, you have that. Do you agree with that, Mr.?
Absolutely.
All right. Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
It's exciting.
Okay. All right. Item K is consider requests from the Tree Board to authorize the mayor to sign an application for Tree City USA designation. And I believe we have Leslie Fox, is that correct?
I might have two days of signing. Oh, you got that, too.
Leonard copied that off. We had a late email, so we could all use a copy.
Okay.
I didn't copy. Just got home late.
I kind of started filling your desk first. You can change it if you're like, okay.
Hey, I am Leslie Fox, the chairman of the Independence Tree Board, and we are almost ready to send in the application for Tree City USA. There are two signatures that I ended up needing. The first one is the Arbor Day proclamation, which would have been a good idea last time I was here, when I asked for your permission to do the Arbor Day, but I didn't know that I needed an official proclamation. So it's just a promise that we're going to try to do this regularly.
Celebrate Arbor Day.
And the other one is just the approval of the application itself.
Just what we have in our packet.
Yes.
Well, part, I, that's the part she sent us, I think there's a little bit more online or something to that, isn't there?
Is there? That's not the entire application.
Okay, that's it, okay.
That's the signature form.
All right, thanks.
But, anyone is welcome to look at the entire application if they would like to.
Now, this says the 2016 application, is that, is that correct?
It is. The application process was started in 2016, and we have until one year from the date it was started, to complete it.
Yeah, we started the process a couple of years ago, actually.
Oh, okay.
You know, we, we had to pass a tree ordinance, we had to form a tree board, all these things we're doing, we're building up to this, actually, to go for this Tree City USA designation. So, I think this is really the final step, right?
It is. After these two signatures, I'll be able to push send.
Okay. Leonard, do you have?
On your application, just to clarify, where you've got the budget, since we're having budget requests tonight, the amount is, is what was spent in the past, you're not expecting that much money each year?
That's not money for the tree board. That is money that is already being used by the city for these things.
Okay.
So, it's not a different budget.
Okay. Just to clarify that you're not wanting that amount every year.
Yeah, it's just the money that you're already paying people to work on the trees around the city.
Okay.
It's not extra money.
Okay.
So, it says total community forestry expenditures of $19,000. That was for 2016? Because the trees I know were more than that.
I, I'm not sure exactly. I know that Barbara Burskins sent me the, the line out of...
That's basically money that, like, for us to take care of the trees, like the street department, the labor, picking up dead trees, cutting any trees down, that kind of cost.
So, that's money we spend every year, not just like planting trees downtown?
Every year.
And that's all over, all over the city?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, it's not just downtown, which is the way I, okay.
That's what I was wondering, is downtown?
Yeah, I was curious, you answered the question. All right. Other comments or questions?
Let's do it.
Okay. We're backdating this, actually, April 28th, so that you noticed that, okay? So, I would make, or entertain a motion then that we...
Is that legal, to backdate something?
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, is that...
I mean, let's just do it with today's date, we're just wondering that we're going to celebrate Arbor Day.
Well, I actually put today's date on it, we could just promise to do it next year.
Well, it says this eighth day of June down here.
But, April 28th is Arbor Day. So, each, it, we actually did it on April 29th, but...
April, you're only saying that's Arbor Day.
Yes.
Right, we're just saying we're going to celebrate Arbor Day.
So, next year, on April 28th.
Yeah, don't worry about that.
Okay. Well, that's like a check.
No, it's not like a check.
Okay, then we would entertain a motion for, well, we'd actually, for the proclamation and the application. Should we do separate motions?
Yeah.
Why don't you do two separate ones? Why don't you do separate, okay. I'd entertain a motion then, for the application to be submitted to Tree City USA.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion by anyone? Then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, the Arbor Day proclamation. For what date?
Arbor Day.
Arbor Day.
Whenever it falls, we'll celebrate it.
Right. So, is that for...
Every year.
Every year, yeah.
Just every year?
Yep.
Every single year, okay.
We will never skip one.
That's not the point, yeah. Okay. So, is that...
So, I, I move that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
It's been a long process, it sounds like.
Yeah.
All right. This'll be the one where, for a lot of people are here for.
My copy.
The author, this is a, consider authorizing the mayor to sign the access management agreement with KDOT, which was for West Main, so Wayne?
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for letting me be a part of this meeting tonight. First off, I heard something earlier, and I want to clarify this, this is Wayne Goodmanson, citizen, saying this, but those bicycle racks are great, and exercise is great, but I'm looking for the pill that gives me the same results as the exercise, so I'm not going to, I'm going to hold, hold my breath on that. I'm here because of something, and I thought it was only about two, three years ago we started, but I got looking back on, on the hierarchy and the chain of happenings that brought me to here, and we started this process in October of 2012. And when I got looking through, and Topeka kind of helped remind me, we have never had an agreement signed between the City of Independence and the Kansas Department of Transportation. So, I have brought with me a cooperation agreement for you guys to review, hopefully sign, or do with whatever you wish on that. It's definitely after the fact, the barn door was opened and the horse is out, we should have done this before we provided the $2 million for West Main, but we didn't. So, basically also, by signing this or ratifying this, it also gives you another pot of gold to shoot for. You can also then receive or apply for access management dollars, which without approving this or ratifying this contract, you cannot apply for that funding. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
This is basically a standard contract you do anywhere?
Yes, we, yes, well, this is only, this is only the second one I've been involved with. We did one with Parsons, and in fact, at a Parsons City Commission, or City Council meeting, it was probably a month or so ago, a fitness, the same consulting firm that did yours, recognized the City of Parsons and the KDOT from the American Council of Engineering Consultants for the work done on these, on these access management plans. So, yes, it is a basic, canned, canned contract, basically.
I'm not sure, we have lots of people that are wanting to speak, but...
We've got Chuck, yeah, we have Chuck Godd first, was Chuck, would you like your... Stay close, Wayne, yeah.
Don't go away.
Thank you. I want to thank KDOT for the $2 million that came in, really handy when our West Main was in the condition that it was, and I think everyone remembers the dust storms and the chuck holes and things like that. I don't know what we would have done without those funds to get that done, so thank you very much for that. At issue, there's, there's two documents that come into play here. One is the agreement that Wayne has brought for you to execute tonight. This, the other agreement, the other contract, if you will, is the access management plan itself. The contract he's asking you to sign now obligates you to comply and ratifies that previous plan that was put together by the consultants that he spoke about just a few minutes, moments ago. My issue is with, and many businesspeople in towns' issue is, with, not with the, the agreement, not with the plan itself, but with the number of closures that are included in that plan. I don't think the community actually realizes at this point how many access points along the Highway 75 thoroughfare from the north city limits to the west city limits are included in, for closure. There are 66 access points scheduled for closure. Many of those are fine, I mean, they, they've got great designs put in place to reroute traffic, and, and safety is the issue, everybody is in favor of safety. But, there are, are a handful of those closures that represent a severe and negative impact to small business owners in Independence. All of us know that the traffic thoroughfare through a town is critical to economic development. If you have any question about that, visit a small community where the highway has located out of town and gone around the town. Businesses that expand or relocate, relocate out to that traffic thoroughfare, they don't stay in town, that's proven time and time again. So, the traffic corridor through our community is important, it's port, it's important to be, for it to be safe, it's also important for the community to be able to develop economically along that corridor. As I said, a handful of the sites scheduled in this closure plan, which is labeled as concept only, are, are very critical. In one case, the adapt, adapting the plan as it's proposed to the redesign or the entrance would make that business unusable for its current purpose. If the business owner had to sell it, that would obviously, could be a change of use, we don't know what the specific definition of a change of use is yet, but he wouldn't, that would render that property unusable for that purpose, so he would lose tremendous equity that he's built up over years in that business. We can't allow those kinds of things to happen and continue to develop economically in, in Independence. Specifically, to the business that I am involved with, Commercial Bank, we have two entrances on the east side on our north parking lot. Both of those entrances are very important. We have agricultural customers who come to the bank on their way to and from the sale barn, they may be going to a grain elevator, wherever, they're pulling a, they've got a, a large truck, they're pulling a trailer in many cases, livestock trailer, and they must enter and exit through separate, they can't make a turnaround in one, one part of our parking lot. They have to enter one, make their circle, and come back out again. City services, we can't hire someone to go out and manage people trying to get through our ATMs and park in front of our building when the trash trucks come into going with its size through one entrance. Armored car services, it's a security issue for armored car full of money to pull into our parking lot, open the doors, and then be able to be blocked into that parking lot. They need a separate entrance or escape route to get out of there. So, that's, that's a big issue for us with our business. One of our east entrances is marked for closure in the concept plan, and, and that's, that's untenable for us, we can't allow, we can't have that, it causes the problems that I just described. At issue is the definition of change of use. In the access management plan, it says that these closures will be triggered when a change of use occurs. We have asked many times for a definition of a change of use, and we have not received one. What we have received is an excerpt from the state's overall access management plan, which says when a change of use will come into play, but does not define what change of use is. And we've heard it applied in many different ways in the area. Additionally, we received a letter some time ago from Julianne Upchurch, I think is her name, a senior...
Jessica.
Jessica Upchurch, who's a senior project engineer with KDOT. She introduced, in that letter, she introduced two new terms that could trigger a closure, change of business versus change of use. So, that would say if, potentially if Maria's restaurant changed to Barnet Joseph's Italian Pizzeria, that could be a change of business, so would they have to close an entrance there? Another, we don't know, it's not defined. Another concept that was introduced in that letter was anytime construction occurs along the highway. So, potentially if there was a construction project on North Pennsylvania Avenue, since the scope of construction is no, not either defined, be curb fixing a curb, or overlaying, or something like that, it could trigger closure of this, of those sites along that construction area. So, at this, without a, a description of a definition of change of use, change of business, or what type of construction is involved, it's, it's virtually impossible for economic development to occur along that thoroughfare. Investors need to have some surety when they make decisions to invest money, to buy businesses, to improve businesses, and do these types of create jobs. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for that definition, so the people of Independence can plan and be cooperative with KDOT in making this plan work for everyone. So, my rec, my, what I'm asking the commissioner to do today is to work with KDOT, because we're very appreciative of KDOT, and we want to continue that partnership. But, we want to cooperate, that's, that's not a unilateral thing. What we would like to have is KDOT and, and the commissioners agree to what change of use means, so that people in Independence can make business decisions knowing what the consequences will be. And we would like for you to delay signing this agreement, which confirms the plan, until some of these closures, until that definition is received and agreed upon, until some of these closures, of these, a handful of these 66 closures are removed from that concept drawing, because they make, have a negative impact on our businesses, and in some case could cause businesses to close. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck.
Okay. Ed Epp.
I'm Edward Epp, owner and veterinarian at Independence Animal Hospital, that is also affected by this access management agreement. Currently, there are two drives going in and out of our clinic. This proposed to close one and only have one drive. A couple of problems with that is, like Chuck mentioned, the trucks with trailers, delivery trucks, the trash truck, when they come, currently they come in one drive, go out the other drive, that would be difficult for them to maneuver. So, without looking at the actual building and situation, it's hard to describe, but the building is fairly close proximity to the road. If there's one drive, it's going to increase safety risks with cars backing out and try and turn around and get out the same drive that came in, as well as trucks, avoiding trucks and trailers coming in and out. The change in ownership, the change in business activity, the change of use, all those things are questions in my mind as well. And, just 43 years, we've never had an accident with two, two drives there, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, John Beetz.
Commissioners, Mr. Manager, welcome. My name is John Beetz, I represent a number of people affected by the proposed plan to control access on Highway 75, including Roman's Outdoor Power, the Kubota distributor, who would lose 100% of its direct access to Highway 75, Roman's Motor Company, which would lose 75% of its direct access, Egbert's Restaurant, which would lose 100% of its direct access, Western Plains Alliance, which operates the Jump Start, and the, the property to the northeast, Catty Corner, which is a vacant convenience store, which would lose 75% of its access, Parham's Bakery, which would lose at the Daylight Donut, 100% of its direct access, and Mikey's Sea Store, which would lose 50% of its direct access. These are businesses, business owners who invested millions of dollars of property, in property along Highway 75 and Penn and Maine. I think there's no doubt in anybody's mind that if access is restricted, the value of these properties will be impaired. Access is something that is not, can be taken by the, the state, by the government at will, it's not compensable unless, unless access is totally eliminated. So, this is a potential action that's going to harm property owners, business owners in this community, and it's based upon a plan that is five years old. It is based upon a proposed agreement which, which would cede control of these issues to the, the Kansas Department of Transportation. And what's our experience been with it? Well, qual, where was Alan Wolfe? There he is. They, they wanted to build a nice new building, they wanted to add a, a nice new place of business out there, and, and, and said, and wanted to know from KDOT if their access was okay, and it took them 90 days to get a response. So, the, the agreement, the arrangement that's being proposed, we think is very much flawed, and, and we know that the state offers the carrot, future participation, and future gold. So, we do want to cooperate, but I, I would, on behalf of my clients, urge the city to consider several things in any agreement. Number one, that if a current agreement is signed, that it call for an immediate update of the plan, because the plan's out of date. Number two... Number two, I think that KDOT should agree to endeavor at least to promptly respond to inquiries and questions for consents and waivers. They may not do it, but they should at least commit to the idea. And finally, I don't think the city should cede control over this access issue. I think before an access point is closed, that either it ought to be condemned in eminent domain, which sometimes happens because more right of ways needed, or it, these property owners ought at least have the protection of this commission to evaluate a determination that would otherwise be made in Topeka. And I'd suggest that the agreement call for that review and control by our city commission before it happens. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Wayne.
Well, I really do wish that these comments would have been brought up when we were doing the plan, because we had two public meetings, and we asked for people to come and give comments, and the designers were there, and they did take these comments into review before they come up with the design plans. You know, like I said, I'm just trying to finish this up. You don't have to sign anything, and that's fine. But, as far as access goes along our highway, any new entrances, you do have to have a permit from us. So, that still has to be done. So, I'm just here trying to, trying to end an issue that's been around for a while. And with that, I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from. Again, I hear, you know, what we have now, we're not here to change anything now. It's all if the property should change, that's when we'd like to look at it and make any revisions we can to comply with the plan.
I think there's some misunderstandings from what I've read. First, the access management plan was specific to expedite travel through a town, and part of the plan was closing access points. The money came from that specific plan, so by us seeking money from the access management plan, we were aware in 2012 of these closings.
I think there were six at the time.
Yeah, just because of-
And then we had to put in a 15-foot twiddle.
Because of that, project was underway. And no one is forced in an existing business to close opening. And I know, for example, when Sonic purchased a property where they're locating, it was aware, they were aware that according to the access management plan, they couldn't have curb cut on Chestnut Street.
And we met with the Sonic, too, to try to work out, work out entrance and exits from there.
And they were allowed to put a curb cut there. You know, from working with the Dairy Queen project, we were, we had the same situation. The engineers were, were firm on curb cut located to the corner where the, I remember it as a laundry building was removed. They wanted access to the parking lot off the side street, but the south side of the building, they were willing to work. We had discussion and came up with a suitable alternative. What we're looking at now, you know, we've taken the money from the corridor access management plan. One of the letters says that if we don't sign the agreement, the way I understand, is just for future funding from that account.
Correct. During the process of the construction on the highway, because we did not have an agreement signed, I had the authority to just stop payments. And I didn't, because I really thought the city would, you know, step up to the plate and honor the agreements and the business dealings that we worked out coming up with the plan. I did not do that, so I made a $2 million mistake. But, you know, that's life.
No, I'd like to choose not to think that way.
And then also, Brahms is another example where we worked with the city and the business, you know, to try to find a way to work things out, and we were able to get them to where we met both of our needs. I mean, it's, it's over and done with. West Main's built.
So, what is the definition of change of use?
To me, it's a different business coming in. If I have a vet clinic, and I bring in a, some antique store, to me, that's a change of use. That's going to change the number of vehicles that are going to be coming to and fro. That's the way I look at it. Something that's going to change the traffic flow in and the traffic flow out.
What, if it was to change, say, the vet clinic, since you brought that up as an example, the vet clinic were to change ownerships, would that be considered to be a change of use?
No, no. I don't, I don't read the access management plan that way. It's got, the way I interpret it, it's got to be a change of use. Because to me, if a one vet or another vet, you're going to probably have about the same traffic counts coming in and out, so it wouldn't, wouldn't change anything.
See, I think that's part of the issue, is that there's not a definitive definition for change of use.
Yeah, and I don't know what the access management plan, the definition in the plan says. I'm not sure. I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
Doesn't the agreement also say that every two years that KDOT-
All right to me, here.
Yeah.
Meet with the city, and they'll review the plan?
Yes.
So, is that a possibility before we sign this agreement? Can we meet and meet with city staff and determine some of these, you know, they had mentioned several different potential issues. Can we meet, city staff? Would KDOT be willing to meet with city staff?
Sure.
Work these out?
And I could try to get the access management, we've changed. Jessica relocated to Denver.
Yeah.
So, we have Nelda Buckley. She is our new special projects engineer. She's the one in charge of it. And, yeah, I'm sure we could come down here and meet.
Seth.
I didn't see any letters where we had actually in writing requested a clarification until, what was it, 2015, was it, Kelly?
I sent an email to Jessica and got a reply back. I sent it to her September 18th, 2015, and she sent me a, and it actually was the same excerpt, I just think, from the plan.
Yeah, probably was. I'm sure that's what she would have-
So, it didn't really provide any more clarification. It just says, "Property owners who currently have an access onto a state highway and change the use of their property must notify KDOT in writing of the change," which we sent the letter, unlike the quality one, in June on that, but then we didn't hear back till, like, September.
That was a fiasco. That one was like 90 days or something, and I don't know why it took that long to get an answer. I can't say on that one, but we were at fault.
Taken five years to sign an agreement, so I can see a problem on both sides of the table. But, and, you know, at the public hearing, the access drawings were shown, and they were drawn, and possibly the communication process of notifying the property owners directly at that time, which was the city's responsibility, that we dropped the ball in letting them know then, so we could have got it a little more in detail at that time. I did visit with some of the property owners along the path, and I think Doug was at the meeting then, and Randy Kelly mentioned their concern, that both of their properties are significantly impacted with modifications of entrances and-
Randall Romans called me. It was a substantial amount of time after we've done all this, and said that he had just heard about it for the first time. So, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, I don't know how the word went out.
Well, so, I mean, but that's in the past. That doesn't-
That's in the past.
That doesn't address the issue that's before us right now.
That's correct.
And the issue is, the concern, and it's not KDOT's intention to put anybody out of business.
Exactly not, no.
So, with that, with that, it would seem that we could meet with city staff, come up with what we think is a good plan, bring it to us, and then let us review it, get with the property owners again.
Well, I think, I think the nickel, I think the monkey's on your back now. We've got what we consider to be a good plan. You don't like our plan, so I think when we meet, you need to propose to us what a good or an optimal plan for the city would be.
Okay, we can do that. If that, is that, if that's what takes it to get off the snide, because we don't want to lose access control money. You know, we want to be able to participate. I don't think they call them clink projects, or whatever that is anymore.
Well, that, yeah, that's a different pot of gold.
Okay.
But, that, that is a very competitive pot of gold, and you've got a lot of competition for that. We just did the C clip stuff a few weeks ago. So, that is, I think there were, we had 12 or 15 just from my district, and there was a bunch more than that for tens of millions of dollars, which we aren't going to get. So, that money's, I don't know how much, it hasn't been funded yet.
See, I think until tonight, I'm not sure anybody knew what, and you had given a decent definition of change of use in my mind.
That's the way I look at it, you know, and that's-
So, then that could be, that's the way it's interpreted, because it's on video.
Yeah. I hope they got my two hairs, that's all I'm really concerned about.
As long as Wayne promises to never retire, that's the deal.
But, in your situation, though, unless you're going to sell the bank, it won't affect you. Or if another bank comes in, really, your use is pretty unique, right?
But Jessica's letter said, "Construction project along the corridor."
Okay. And I, and I, I don't, yeah. And that would be a concern. I understand that.
Yeah, see, that's, 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 that's where the concerns are.
And even with the six that were closed, I think there was some negotiation on those. There were more identified initially, and the number was reduced down to six.
Most of those were residential entrances as well. So, I mean, you guys got out lucky on that. We didn't really hit any businesses hard on that.
Now, with the access management funds, or the plan, it shows using the alleys as access along the corridor.
Correct.
And the access money then is available to rebuild or improve the alleys also, isn't it?
Correct. The alleys that were on your plan. There were a number of alleys that were specifically mentioned or shown on the plan. Access management dollars could be used to reconstruct those alleys, yes.
So, like behind Mikey's Taco Inn?
I don't remember which ones were, were shown on the plan.
I think those were.
I was thinking more over on the West Main side.
Yeah, I was kind of looking the whole thing over this afternoon. I think those were indicated, too.
The issue with Mikey's is that the curb cut they've drawn in blocks the gas pumps.
Well, it would only, the way it was explained at the public hearing, they would only take effect if the pumps were removed.
Where does it say that?
That's the change of use, it's change of business, not change of operation.
If somebody moved in there and bought that and used it for a gas station like it is, we would leave it as it is.
I think as long as everybody knows that, it's written down somewhere, so when you're off the commission and you're retired, whoever takes your place has to know that. I don't see why it's unreasonable to write that down.
No. Now, just clarify from change, instead of change of use.
Just so that there's, so that people know the playing ground right up front.
Yeah, that's all we need to ask.
And they can, and they have the ability then to make decisions based upon what a change of use or change of business.
Right, but Chuck, I thought, did you come to any of our public meetings?
I didn't even know that.
See, that's, that's what the problem was, because I thought it was explained pretty clearly at the public meetings. We had big old aerials put out, you know, with all these changes and stuff, and they, they said that this stuff wouldn't happen unless there was a change of business use, you know, and like Mikey's, because the pump issue was discussed at Mikey's, and it was not going to be affected unless Mikey's changed hands and a swap shop moved in there or something, you know? That's going to change the use and the number of vehicles going in.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, that's fine, but it just needs to be written down somewhere.
Doesn't this all get back to, why doesn't somebody define change of use?
Yes, yeah.
Well, you know how attorneys are.
Yeah. Exactly.
No attorney wrote those, they were written by politicians.
How many politicians are attorneys?
Not very many. You know there are none in the Senate?
Really?
There are none in the Kansas Senate.
Really?
So, we have hope.
So, that-
Well, if this, if this session is any indication, you don't have hope. And the pot of gold, the access management funding will have, I don't know, but now that everybody's going to be going home tomorrow, hopefully, funding numbers will start coming down the pike.
So, that there's an improvement in maintenance, deferred maintenance, and all those types of things, yeah. So, our, so we're in agreement that we can meet with KDOT, correct?
Correct.
And we can bring up some of the issues that we have. In the meantime, where does the change of use definition come from?
I would say it comes out of the access management plan, the booklet we have.
But I don't think it's in there.
I thought, okay. Well, good, then we can come from my interpretation of it.
There we go.
And I don't know, I just skimmed through it before I came, so.
Okay.
These are questions we can ask Nelda.
Right, so if we, in a sense, get our ducks lined up in a row before we meet, we understand what change of use is, we understand what change of business is, all those terms that we just talked about, then we have a chance to put something together and mitigate some of the concerns, Craig, that, that we've heard from business owners. Because nobody wants to put anybody out of business. I mean, good lord, that doesn't make any sense.
No, and the purpose of access management, if you read through the literature, I mean, really, what we're trying to do is, is mesh safety and economic development. We're trying to bring them both together, because, well, classic case, K-47 and 400, that convenience store gas station, their business has gone up drastically or significantly since we put the roundabout in, because there were a lot of people in Ferdonia that, for whatever reason, were afraid to cross 400, because of all the crashes that happened there. And then we put the roundabout in, and so their business volumes went up. So, I mean, getting in and out is very important for people, and if it's really difficult to get into a business, they're not going to show up.
Yeah, it seems like, to be candid, this almost seems like it's a big city plan with a small city implementation.
But it was a big city plan that you won, you took $2 million for, though, you know?
Well, I, I got that.
I mean, that's-
You said that three times, I got it. But the, you know, the practicality is, is that you can't put a round peg in a square hole all the time. And that seems like that's pretty much what's trying to happen here. And, because I don't know, the traffic counts and all that kind of stuff, but you could almost change use, and it wouldn't affect traffic. As a matter of fact, it could be less in some instances. So, I mean, how would you address that? You're going to say, well, you got to close it off, and it's going to be less traffic. That doesn't make any sense.
We would still look at it that way. It'd be a change of use, so we would look at doing whatever the plan said with the driveway.
As long as we have a definition of change of use.
Yeah.
I'd be good with that. You good?
Yeah, yeah, it really was a plan for larger cities.
And what happened, I mean, we got to move forward. We got to make it work. Because I would like to sign plans that were able to get-
So, we get some more money from them.
Yeah, continued access money.
In a nutshell.
Well, that's the way it's going to work. I mean, that's good, bad, or ugly, that's-
What you meant to say is, we want to be a great partner with the state of Kansas.
Well, thank you. And the state of Kansas wants to be a good partner with, I mean, this is where I live, folks, so it's not like I'm throwing the baby out with the water.
With the milling and overlay projects along Highway 75, as it goes through Independence, then we could use, or we could apply for, access management plan funds instead of the new clip funds.
I don't know about that one, Leonard. I'd have to, I, I'm not sure on that, because to me, it fits more of the C clip money than it does access management, because it's just a preservation or a maintenance job, and access management goes beyond that. It incorporates preservation, but it also changes something to make safety, economic development, improve those areas.
I'm just trying to get money.
Checks in the mail, paydays- Checks in the mail, payday's Friday, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Wayne, I, um, I'm an engineer also, and I know that all engineers are trustworthy, loyal and helpful and all that. But I'm still not 100% clear. I know that the state's goal is to get traffic moving efficiently. We don't want to slow down highway traffic, or it'd be easier to route it around the city. But you want to keep everybody safe. But, you know, I've only lived in the city three and a half years, and the whole time I've been here, I've heard, heard people concerned about this. Like, how can I sell my property if, you know, if Applebee's came along? They're not. I mean, I haven't heard anything from Applebee's, but they want to buy my property, but I, I can't promise them access because we don't, you know, we don't know if KDOT will approve it. So, I, I think it's more than just if you, you know, if you sell your gas station to another gas station, you're fine. Because what if, I mean, what if they want to, what if somebody offers them a million dollars for their property and, and now we can't get access, so it's useless?
But that's where you guys got to be talking to us, because irrelevant of this access management plan, on US 75, on US 160, we have to give a permit for an entrance. So, if a new business comes to town, whether we have the plan, whether we don't have the plan, KDOT's still going to have to approve that entrance.
Okay.
Even if it's an existing entrance?
If it changes use.
Change of use.
If it's a, it, um, Yates Center, there was three residents up there, and they were entrances to houses, okay? Pizza Hut comes in, buys all three lots. That was a change of use. So, their three entrances that they had were no longer viable entrances, and we had to come up with a different entrance plan.
But they got their Pizza Hut.
They got their Pizza Hut, correct.
So, you guys worked with them.
And we combined, we combined entrances, we changed, they, they got rid of the three, and we, we put in, I think, two. So, and it met our policy. So, that's what I'm saying. We can, what if, we can have a, we can have a major business come in, we're still going to have to get together, just like we did on Sonic, just like we did on Brahms. We're going to have to get together because you need us to grant a permit for you to put an entrance in.
Okay. Fair enough.
Anything else? Like I said, though, um, I believe we've done our part. We've came up with a plan, we made the plan. You guys want to change it. It's your time to come to us with your changes.
So, we understand change of use?
Yes.
Okay. Or change of business, or...
And Chuck, you were talking, and I didn't count them. I don't know, 66 entrances were closed? I don't know. But, you know, if you don't like where we're closing entrances, have a good justification, and we can talk about it.
So, it's kind of a case-by-case basis, is what you're saying?
It is a case-by-case. And if you read through the, this policy and stuff, the timeline, you know, there is no timeline unless it changes hands, or changes usage, I should say, not ownership, changes usage. I'm not a silver-tongued lawyer, so...
Okay. All right. Questions? I think we have direction. Craig, you good?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to leave this, and then I'm going to run.
Thank you, Wayne.
Run?
Yeah.
For the exercise part.
Okay, I'm going to waddle. Who gets this? New guy in the bar?
Sure.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Okay. Item N, M, I should say, is consider traffic modifications on East Oak in Riverside Park, and in Riverside Park. Jerry, I think?
Would it be appropriate for me to make an exercise joke to you?
Sure.
This is the plan that, this is the final version of the proposed plan that we came up with after listening to some citizens' concerns. Um, so, pretty self-explanatory there. Um, the one issue that we had was just concerns about, one, one resident just wanted to be able to get, be able to park there once a year. So, you know, we, we have that process that we bring to you guys to get parking approved if we need to block a street. So, this is, this is the finalized version of what we're proposing right now.
This is going to make it much safer, right?
That's the goal. It's, you know, when you, as it sits now, it's, it's kind of ambiguous as to whether it's a two-lane or a four, four-lane roadway.
Right.
And, um, I've had people complain to me that, well, I'm, you know, I'm, move over to, or I'm, I'm driving down the street, what I think where I should be, and I go to make a right turn, and somebody passes me on the right thinking it's a four-lane street. And I've had the same complaints, and somebody goes to make a left turn, and they're driving where they think they should be, and someone passes them on the left like it's a four-lane. So, I, I do believe that this will be a safer plan.
Is the roadway wide enough for two lanes each direction?
Yes, it is. In, in discussing it with the engineers and with the street department, yes.
To me, a bike lane for seven blocks that goes from nowhere to nowhere, it'd be better to move the stripe to the center and have two lanes each direction to clarify that than to put a bike lane that doesn't go anywhere. Doesn't come from anywhere, doesn't go from anywhere. So, you know, if you're going to do bike lanes, then we need to look at bike lanes in town so that it has a, a purpose. But, you know, if, if it's wide enough for two-lane traffic, then mark it so that it's clear, and we can eliminate that confusion. But just a bike lane along there doesn't make sense.
Let me clarify one thing. Uh, the width of the roadway is wide enough for the lane plus the eight-foot bike lane, is what I should have said.
Okay. I asked, was it wide enough for two lanes of traffic?
Okay.
Vehicle traffic?
My apologies.
Is it wide enough for two lanes of vehicle traffic?
Is Mike here? I think that's who we discussed this with. Um, that I'm not sure of. But it was wide enough to have an eight-foot bike lane and have a travel lane in it. And we were, we were advised by the engineers to use an eight-foot bike lane, because that was the width that they, that they suggested is safe for bike lanes in general.
Well, there's heavy congestion of bikes that's used for the pool area this time of year. The other day, when it was warm, I saw like three or four kids with bikes crossing right there over North Penn. And, uh, I mean, I, if it's a safety issue, I don't, I mean, which is what you're saying, it's a safety issue.
Well, the safety issue is more about just clearly marking the roadway, so they don't have that ambiguity of what, what lanes are for what.
So, the big issue, though, is where the turn, the one you go into the park, and then you have Park Street that comes up, there's, there's no stop, like, stop signs there.
That's correct. When you're, when you're on Oak Street, there's no stop signs.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, the plan is to put some stop signs there.
Yes. Put a stop sign that stops the eastbound traffic. It's, you see the great big crosswalk sign that covers like a four lots there? It's right next to that.
Which there's a, a lot of people that walk up there to the fountain in the evening.
That's a bad intersection to cross.
Yeah, it's a dangerous intersection.
Because it's so, where you've got the crosswalk shown, it's so wide there that you don't have any definition and...
Well, I, I'm fine with the proposal.
Also, the, the other traffic control in that particular intersection to make things safer, is that right? Turn-only lane?
Yeah.
As you're coming south away from the fountain there. I noticed that, in watching traffic there, I noticed that you have to drive into oncoming traffic if you make a left turn out of there. And right now, again, that's, that's not controlled. So, the potential's there for, for more conflict.
Yeah. And you said there's been some incidents where people have almost got run over by a car?
Just, just anecdotal complaints coming in about, you know, mostly about the passing on the right, passing on the left, issues, bikes. And bikes are, you know, by ordinance, bikes are supposed to operate on the roadway. They're a wheeled vehicle. They're not supposed to be on the sidewalk. So, you know, might clear some of that up as well.
Okay. Questions? Further questions?
Do you think the speed limit signs are necessary there since it's 30 miles an hour all along?
I think the more you communicate, the better. I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of speed limit signs, I know, and, and traffic controls, um, to control, you know, to manage traffic and calm traffic. And, you know, we know that the law is that if it's not posted inside of a city, it's 30 miles an hour. But I, to me, I think the more, the more communication you give to the drivers, the better. And, you know, when we drive a car, it's kind of like I said with the last deal, with the last proposal, uh, when we drive a car, we need to be able to have a reasonable expectation of what traffic is going to do around us, and that's probably a lot of what keeps us safe. And so, the more clear we make that, the better off I think we are. So, I like having a couple of speed limit signs for each direction, or at least one for each direction.
Okay.
I was thinking maybe a chance of increasing revenue, some tickets.
Second motion.
It would reduce some, uh, arguments in court, I suppose.
Yeah.
So, we can either approve this plan, or we can reject it. It's up to, I'd entertain a motion then to approve the plan as presented for, uh, East Oak and Riverside Park.
So, moved.
Okay. Would there be a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approved the plan for crosswalks, speed limit signs, and bike lanes there, basically on, uh, Oak. All those, favoring 65 by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
He didn't discuss the second part of that.
We need to discuss it.
Well, the stop signs off the oval, he didn't, I don't know if he wanted to go over those.
Was that a, yeah, three-way stop there at the oval?
Yes.
So, that was detailed in the ass, right?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you understand that that includes that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the three stop signs, yeah.
We're good.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item N is for sign ordinances, the sign, authorizing a merit of sign ordinance to be prepared by city attorney, adopting the 2012 edition of the residential code, the 2012 edition of the internal building code, the 2011 edition of the national electric code, the 2012 edition of the uniform plumbing code, and the uniform swimming pool, spa and hot tub, uh, code, along with regulation of building trades, KSA 12-1508 and all, and, uh, a bunch of stuff on there. Who's going to, tired of reading it. Yes, Tom?
This is what I do in the evening to entertain myself.
Well, that's enough to put you to sleep, if you hadn't told me.
Well, okay, that's another way to put it. Uh, what we would like to do is table this. We've put a lot of work into trying to update the codes. Our codes presently are 1998 and 1999 additions, depending upon which code we're talking about. We do need to update our codes. Going through the revisions that we've worked, we, we noticed a couple things that we missed and weren't put in that we need to put in specifically towards the fuel-gas code and mechanical code. We'd like to address that before we present that too. So, we'd like to ask this to be tabled until the 22nd, uh, of this month, our next commission meeting, if we could do that. And then we would be ready for the, for your consideration on this.
Good. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Leonard, you were on that committee, yeah?
Uh, I missed the last couple when we were interviewing, but yeah. The regulation of building trades, I had some question. There's some pretty, uh...
That's one we're to talk about. Yeah, those, those are the ones we want to revise and look at.
Yeah, okay.
That one slipped, that one just, we just missed that part.
That's got some issues.
Yeah. And we realized it, so we didn't, we didn't want to present it tonight in its present form. We wanted to have a chance to revise that a little bit.
It might be good to address the codes and take that out, the grouping, and come back separate, because there's some severe...
That, that was our intent, but in looking at the revision, we realized that wasn't. So, that was one of the things that we wanted to make, to make an adjustment on.
So, looking through all this, there's those fees, you know, the fee structures and stuff that's in there, that's all been reviewed?
Yes. Yes.
And you're good with all that?
Yeah, we're good with all that. But there's, there are a couple of fine points that we need to look at, and a couple of inclusions that we need to do. And using the uniform plumbing code, we need to make sure that we're including some associated codes that go with that, and those hadn't been included. So, we need to make sure that we get those included, so.
Okay.
And the existing building code, that wasn't considered as a possibility at this time, or...
Well, we had looked at, and we can certainly discuss that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, th- those are things that we need to, to look at and consider, so.
Okay. Will we wrap the most into table?
We can just table it.
I think, yeah, just table it.
Yeah, we can just table it, yeah.
You started discussion, you can just table it.
Yeah. So, we'll table it till when you're ready.
We'll get ready, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't have to do it next meeting. Just take your time, make sure it's right. That'd be the point.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Can, can you, can you condense the title?
Yeah.
Not really.
Okay. All right. Item O, consider authorizing receipt of bids for replacement of the pump house roof at the Independence Municipal Airport. Sean?
Yeah, so, we've been working on this for, well, since May, I think it was, was when we first started this. The, we got notice that the building was leaking. Uh, it was an old, it's an older last roof that was put on when the roof here was put on, as well as at the, at the water plant. Uh, the interesting part on this is, it's a kind of a shared deal between the city and Cessna. So, in this photo here, the higher, the, the roof that, uh, the higher elevation roof there is Cessna's portion of, of that, and the city owns the more L-shaped version, uh, portion of it, which is about 100 square foot more than Cessna's. Uh, it's by impression that Cessna owns or has the insurance on the, on the roof. So, they had their roofer...
For the entire roof?
For, yeah, for the entire, for the entire structure. Uh, but it doesn't meet their deductible, you know, to, to...
It's self-funded.
What? Is it self? Yeah. So, it doesn't meet their deductible. There is significant hail damage on the roof, being, you know, the age of it is, and the fact that it's Duralast is, you know, it's, you can, it's pretty bad up there on the roof. Uh, so, uh, Cess, uh, Cessna's roofing contractor, Buckley Roofing, was on site. They're recommending, uh, Buckley is putting a TPO, a couple of versions of TPO on. Uh, the specific issue that I see with Buckley's presentation is they're going with the minimum that FM's requiring currently at the moment for, for, for the wind situation out there, and it, and it allows for a mechanically attached TPO roof, uh, which is going to allow portions of the membrane that they're going to put down to basically be unsupported. It's going to be loose. And this is a fairly high, high wind area. The day we were out there, I think it was 25 mile an hour winds, and I'm the idiot standing on the edge of the roof as it's gusting out there. So, uh, I, I'm concerned about the longevity of a membrane roof that's mechanically fastened, you know, attached out there in that location. But it's going to, you know, even though we're going to have a 15 to 20-year warranty with the system that they're presenting, I don't think we're going to get the 15 to 20 years out of it. I think with the amount of wind we're getting, it's going to, it's going to reduce that lifespan of that membrane. They did provide us an option for a fully adhered system, which I think would be a much better roof for, you know, for the city. We wouldn't have to be concerned about the membrane degrading over time like we would with mechanically attached. Uh, I'm not a big fan of TPO. I'll, I'll put that out there. But they do have an option for, for a fully adhered, so that, you know, that would take away some of the problems that you generally have with a TPO being, I call it lucelated or mechanically fastened down. You, you get less likely to have, you know, penetrations in the membrane than it's fully, fully adhered.
Well, in their proposal C with the TPO, the fully adhered, it also has the puncture and the hail.
Yeah.
That would...
I saw that.
It's a 30, yeah, they're giving us, uh, it's only a 20-year warranty on that, uh, in that regards. But it's still, it still would be a much better roof than mechanically fastened. Uh, I mean, there are other systems out there to look at. I don't, I wouldn't recommend, it's a fairly low-slope roof, uh, it... I wouldn't recommend, it's a fairly low-slope roof. It uses internal roof, it uses roof drains internally to, to get the water away from the building. So, a modified bit roof with as, as low slope as it is, I don't think would be appropriate in this situation. I think you have to look at a single ply system, whether that's a TPO or an EPDM. So I did give staff a couple options on it. But I, I cannot recommend going with a mechanically fastened system.
Yeah, I could see where, I've, I've used Buckley in the past. They're a good roofing company.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're real good.
The, the TPO with the hail damage and the puncture warranty, and if it, if it goes under Cessna's contract to do the whole thing, that'd save us some money there and keep all the warranties. And, you know, it's a good product. I think that'd be the...
I will point out, I, I think, talking to the Buckley representative, Cessna is really only interested in doing the mechanically fastened. So, if we wanted the fully adhered, we'd probably have to negotiate that portion with Buckley, but I think we could do it, since the roofs are physically disconnected. It wouldn't be an issue for him to do that in that regard. We could still have him on-site at the same time doing the roof. We'd get some savings in that regard.
Yeah, if we'd share the cost, if they figured what it would be for all mechanically attached, and then we pay the difference from the mechanically attached to the item C, then we could get a good system. I'm, I'm surprised they wouldn't want the, the better roof in the life, you know, it's...
I just...
A little money now, but a lot later.
From the comments that I was, that I was making, they're replacing roofs so they can right now before the FM rating changes. So, it's, it's...
What changes?
Uh, factory mutual. It's a, a rating system for, you know, for roofs and light. And this system that they're rating right now is potentially going to change, and for the level that they're trying to, what we're gonna have to go to right now will be a fully adhered versus allowing mechanically fastened like they have in this proposal, so.
I agree with you, Leonard, on the fully adhered.
Is there, there's equipment on the roof too, isn't there?
There is a, a number of roof ha, uh, roof exhaust vents, and then there's also the vehicle exhaust port on ours, as well as theirs. So one of the deals I asked Buckley to factor in in their bid when they were doing it is to figure in some additional walk pad around those exhaust ports, so we would...
Installed, installed.
Install them, so we wouldn't have an issue of when the, the system comes on, if it basically cook in the membrane. I mean, it is, the, the exhaust port is higher up, but there's always that possibility that it could, you know, cause some damage to the, to the roof there, so.
Yeah. And if there's workers that get up there to service anything, that's where you get the puncture.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, and the goal, and the, and the key really right there, like Buckley indicated, and I've had other roofers, is if you have a guy get up on the roof, and he screws up and drops, you know, a, a piece of equipment down, and it damages the roof, instead of just, you know, trying to fix it themselves, immediately call the roofer so they can come properly fix it, because the minute they try to do it, that nulls the warranty out.
So that's the advantage of going with the higher-priced roof, you keep the controls.
I'd rather do it right, which is what you're suggesting. Gary?
I'm still a little confused. I'm always the slow one in the group.
You're fine.
It sounds like you're proposing that we bid the project out and get some other bids, and you guys are saying, let's take one of Buckley's bids?
The fully adhered.
Yeah.
Right.
The fully adhered.
But it's, it said in here, he's proposing that we bid it out. You're saying, forget it.
Well, we were looking at, just, I was initially just looking at what, knowing what Buckley was going to do for Cessna is, they only want to do the mechanically fastened.
Right. So Cessna is gonna move forward with Buckley?
Yep.
Okay.
They're gonna be forward. If you want, yeah. My recommendation, if you want to stay with Buckley and try to get some, you know, savings, would be negotiate with Buckley for the fully adhered on your portion of roof. Otherwise, bid it out and go for a fully adhered system on it.
Gotcha.
But they're already gonna be there. They're...
Right.
A reputable company. They're, they're certified by Carlisle Roofing to do the system, so they're gonna, you're gonna have the warranty immediately when they get off, go off the roof. I mean, it, it just needs to be fully adhered. That's the big, that's the big issue.
And that's only two thousand more for the entire building, right?
Well...
Roughly four. No, it's, it's more than that.
Be six. About sixty.
It could be six.
Twenty-six to thirty-two.
Six. I'd rather.
So you're looking at item C there?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Well, B is also fully adhered, or so it says?
Yeah.
That's what it says?
Yeah, B is...
But B is fully here, but it's a, it's a thinner, it's a thinner membrane.
Yeah, it's just different mill thick.
Yeah, that's why you don't get the hail warranty.
Yeah. It's a sixty mil, whereas the, the hail claim version is a hundred fifteen, a hundred fifteen mil.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, it's almost twice the thickness.
Right. Okay. I'm good.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'd entertain a motion then to go with the, actually, item C, I guess you'd say.
Well, we need to get back with Buckley and get a price from them, right?
Yeah, I mean, do you want me to go to Buckley and negotiate that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Think we can just give them direction to do that?
Yes.
Yes. I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah.
Because you'd have to bring back an agreement.
Right.
Right. Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah, there's no use spending money on drawings and specs and time to bid another system. Just...
Yeah.
I'm fine, I'm fine with working with them directly. I mean, because when we were up there on the roof, heard, went over all of it, and they can handle it, so it's...
Yeah. Well, because with the, with this warranty, the manufacturer's gotta come out, so there's really limited time that we need to pay to have it reviewed. The tech comes out, and he certifies, he checks the welds and the whole installation and certifies it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Did you make a motion?
We, I think he's, we've given him consensus to work out a deal and bring back an agreement for us. Okay? Seems like I forgot. Did I forget an item on the event?
I don't think so. Not yet.
You do have a P in there, right?
Uh, I got report on city projects.
Are you, you are not missing anything.
Economic development.
Earlier version, maybe?
Where's that at?
P.
Item P.
After O.
Oh, you didn't get the, you didn't get number one.
Uh-oh.
You cheated my book.
I'm sorry. Actually, I had the intern do it, so I get to blame him.
Oh, whatever. It's Craig's fault.
That's why I was asking, because I knew that was on there.
He might have picked up an old, an older version. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Those summer interns, Don Cushing.
Okay, item P. I knew that wasn't right. Okay, consider an economic development grant agreement with Lebet Health for two hundred thousand dollars. This is what we had discussed last time. There were the agreement, yeah, the agreement was in the city, was in our packet, and basically, it says that it follows the county resolution that there are twenty-six full-time and eleven part-time employees by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Fifty percent of such employees to be Montgomery County residents, provide payroll information for validation purposes, and shall they fail to meet employee numbers or residence, residency requirements, refund to the city sixty, sixty-four hundred, six thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and sixteen cents for, for full-time position and two thousand per part-time position. So...
Also, they, they might, they changed the definition of a full-time employee to thirty hours per week.
Okay.
And that was something that, that Jeff had noted. And also, it does count those employees that are already working here that are gonna be relocated out there, so it's not all new jobs. So just, it's a little bit different than some of our inducements, so, just so that you're aware, it does count those as well. So all of those will be counted towards this.
Okay. Well, that previous meeting, it was approved that we get, enter into this agreement, therefore, and we had a copy of the agreement in front of, in a, that we had, and therefore, we can discuss it further, but I don't see any reason to unless you just want to.
No.
Okay. All right, so then I'd entertain a motion then to approve the development grant, economic development grant agreement with Lebet Health for two hundred thousand dollars. Would be a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign economic development grant agreement with Lebet Health for two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay. Now we're ready for item Q, which is report on city projects and other updates.
Basically, you just have city board minutes, and then also the fire and EMS department was featured in the KMSA magazine, so we added that in there for you. And then the city picnic is the Saturday, starting at three o'clock at the, the four-H building, I believe.
Four-H building. Okay, okay. Okay, commission comments. Gary?
Um, I was gonna ask about the indoor pool. My father-in-law's having a conniption fit that's down again, too. I know it's Craig's fault, but, do we know anything about that?
I can check with, I can check with Brent. I wasn't aware it was down. Sometime, I don't know if they always run it, do they always run it when the outside pool's running? Don't they shut it down? They don't? Okay.
My daughter goes there every day, and it's been down for a week.
Yeah.
It's something about a boiler or something.
Yeah, it's been down, down over and over and over, it seems like. Of course, that's for my father-in-law, and he gets very upset.
Okay, I will ask.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Leonard, do you have anything?
No, I didn't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right, I do have an item. In, several months ago, we had a dis, consent decree about training on open record request. Okay? Have we met that requirement?
Yes. I personally have, back in March, and since then, about three weeks ago, all city department heads and managers got more training on it.
Okay, and?
It was separated, the, the consent decree, but we noted in, in there with the attorney general that we were, we were gonna get it for all the managers. So we have done both ends of that.
And we have it documented?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know that, I think, I think it'd be important, though, that the public know the number of requests and stuff that we're receiving. So I'd like for the city staff to do, to create a report for us that goes back to two thousand and sixteen, through two thousand sixteen, through end of this month or whenever, currently. The number of requests, what they're about, who requested them, and then the amount of time that's been spent on those requests.
So, you want all twenty sixteen and year-to-date?
Yes. And what the requests were, I'm assuming. In, in the, in the report, it said there was forty-three requests, I know. So, what were those requests? How much time was spent on those requests? And, you know, it'll take you a while to put that together, probably, so it doesn't have to be done right now, but...
Number of requests, the time spent on the request.
Yes. What your request was.
Okay.
There are cities that post that on their website, and while we're down, I think we ought to consider posting that on our website as well. But finish the report first.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other items? We don't have public or any executive sessions that I'm aware of. Is there, there's none, right? Okay. Kelly, there's none?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. With that, then, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And...
Who seconded that?
What's that?
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All those in favor, say aye, and stand up and go home. Okay.